All right, I will follow the meeting to order. Um, clerk, could you call the role, please, just noting that Barb is on line?
Angie Wolf?
Here.
Cindy Byting?
Here.
Mary Beth Shaw?
Here.
James Cartman?
Here.
Barb Stott?
Here.
Matt Grohl?
Here.
Great, I do have quick repulsing, please, let me sort of lead you.
Let me lead them to the flag of the United States of America. Interior Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. You may as well look at the routine justice, girl.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you both. Any questions, changes? Here, Nan Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
All right, and I'll say yes as well. And I'll say, oh, okay. We'll keep scrolling through here. Um, three, one, do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes from December 13?
I'll make one.
Thank you both. Any questions or any changes needed? Here, Nan Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of December 20?
I will approve the meeting minutes of December 1.
I'll say yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or changes needed? Here, Nan Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Last of this group. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll accruals and disbursements as they have been presented?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Any questions on anything here? Not seen any, Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And Mary Beth?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Woo, we made it. All right. For President, I do have really two things. I just want to say thank you to Mike and Barb for running again for their next term, running unopposed. So look for their, um, election information when you know it's April. And then also, I just want to say a huge thank you to all of our staff, all of our teachers, all of our admin. You guys are working really hard with a lot of less resources, I mean, you know, people being thin. But we just want to tell you that we're sticking together. You know, we recognize that everybody's working hard and we see it, and it's not going on notice, so, thank you. After that, Jordan?
Yeah, I guess just if any Board members have any questions for the administrators regarding their reports, now would be the time to ask.
I have no, ma'am.
Sure.
I was, um, I don't know if it came from Ben, but I appreciate the thought given to the concessions and stuff and not having those at the games. I haven't really thought about that before, but that was probably a wise move.
It did come from Ben.
All right, any others? I'm a good guy.
All right, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Question. Do we need to put the door open in case more of the solar from shower?
We'll be bringing them in.
We have them staged in another room. All there.
No question.
We didn't want the onboard interaction thing. We've learned over the years.
Thanks a lot.
Good question, yes.
All right, so then we will move on to our district business, um, facilities and transportation. Um, we do have our solar companies here tonight, as was just mentioned. We do have three different ones that have come into presentations. Um, we are looking to stay at 10 minutes?
PSI, I think, first of all.
Oh, PSI.
Yeah, I agree too.
I was ready to jump in. Mike, go ahead.
Hi, Mike Betcher, Performance Services Project Manager, Design Builder. Thanks for having me. Happy New Year. On to the update. The higher middle school renovations, basically on the warranty period, besides finishing, um, high school or flooring next summer, which is on the dock, it's still, um, through the corridors and the cafeteria and everything. Um, we're basically in a warranty period, and then we've got the HVAC system, um, control training set up for Wednesday with Bill and some of his staff. And Bill's, um, gotten access to the software now, which is good for the last couple of weeks, so he's been running through it and sending us questions. He came up, wow, like a week or half ago or so, he came up with a list, you know, page list for us to start going back and forth. What does this do? How do we do this? How do I see this? So we've been going through that stuff to set up for this training, so that we can get through a lot of that, hopefully, and kind of get all those questions answered. Um, as we do the training, then we'll like, still have the training goes on, we'll let Bill run the system and kind of start getting into it more, but we'll still be there, you know, for help and everything. So that's kind of where we're at. Obviously, we still have, we've kind of been through summer, or fall, fall and winter with the system, so we still have to kind of monitor spring, and then we get in the summer for all the seasons, like we usually do for a full cycle, to kind of get the details of, you know, the announcement programming events, so that'll still be happening as well, as we go through, um, the rest of the year, uh, spring and summer. For the elementary school addition, hopefully you guys have been seeing it, basically being erected. Um, that's been the main focus in December, past month, is the steel structure. We've got basically all the main steel up, um, so now we're on to a lot of detailing, uh, connections, bracing, and roof decking. Um, and all the steel beams, like, um, columns, the main steel elements are up. Now it's just all that detail work and coming back through, going across the whole building from southeast, uh, going clockwise and getting all that completed. And then we've also started the metal framer onsite, um, following that in the southeast corner, and starting to do with focus on the exterior walls. So what we're going to do is we're going to get the building enclosed. To do that, we've got to do exterior work, which is mainly the brick, and there's some metal panels on the upper area, but mainly the brick and the roofing to get the building enclosed, weatherproof, basically, so then you can start doing that, um, MEP routing components. So that's where the frame we're starting, starting to track all around the perimeter there from the southeast corner, working our way around. Um, and then we're looking at getting the roofing, starting at the gym a little bit early. Um, the only thing with, as you said, getting roofing exterior, there is some weather, um, temperature elements of that and the products. So, right now, it's supposed to get up to 30 degrees here, which is good, you could do roofing then, um, but today was unfortunately, like, you know, wind chill, zero. So that's starting to play a factor. I mean, December was really great weather, couldn't get any better, um, but now it has some major snows and we're getting some weather things, so it's going to be, you know, um, working through that as we continue to expand on the product. But overall, the main focus, um, for the schedule is to get the structure done, um, January, February, and the parts of March, which hopefully allows us to get, uh, series and roofing started in February, and then I'll take February, March, April, to then set up, getting the MEP roughments started in March, which is another three, four month duration, so then get to finishes in April, May, try to push the finish out. So there's a lot of stacking going on, it's tight, um, but we're going to be pushing as hard as we can on the schedule. Uh, so if you see the pictures in the update, you can see kind of just going from, um, kind of, uh, south to north on the project scan, you can see where, you can see the steel erected, where we've got, you know, all the beams and columns up, the, um, roof joists, um, and some bracing done, it's not all done, all the detailing isn't done, but some of it's done. You can see some of that crosswork, bracing and everything's pulled down, that we want to show a couple of other pictures, I mean, you can kind of go across. That's cognitive, basically, throughout the whole, the whole building. And the picture for taking maybe a little bit wasn't done in the main entrance area yet, but I think now it's pretty much all. Up there, you can even see, start to see the shape of the main entrance, field area around main entrance there, all the steel there.
It is cool to be able to see something now, like, start recognizing the shapes.
Sure.
It's very exciting.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot more visual. Like I said, we've been talking about that one before, you'll see a lot more, you know, coming up and, you know, related to the actual building taking shape and everything, so. The same thing as we get into the guts and the exterior and everything else, so, should be pretty interesting from here on out.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike?
Full speed ahead.
Yeah. Definitely want to say thank you to you and your team for definitely working outside, and I'm sure you're not exempt from the sickness and everything else, so thank you for all the work you've done as well.
Yeah, that first big snow, that came a little early, but it was right after Christmas, which was fun, and it showed it was going to be warm, like 30, 40 degrees though, or something. Then right after Christmas, we got that big snow come, so that was fun, having the reality of that, and being like, okay. Very Christmas, we got through all the snow, so, but it's fun.
Yeah, very cool.
Thanks, Mike.
Appreciate it.
Okay, now I can go to the next one.
Yeah, you're good now.
I didn't see the one and two, I was just focused on you. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Now, thanks, Mike. All right, so now we are up at 6:10, um, for our solar presentation. Jordan, I want to introduce Full Spectrum.
Yep, so obviously Board members have kind of painted the picture for what this is going to look like, tried to explain clearly to the companies as well, kind of what we're hoping for tonight. I understand 10 minutes is relatively quick, but we want to just kind of hear their perspective and what differentiates them, and obviously Board will then make a decision ultimately, so hopefully not tonight. Uh, so our first up is Full Spectrum, and we have Burke here from Full Spectrum, so Burke, we have your presentation up, so if you just want to go ahead and, uh, take it away with your, your presentation.
Sure. Um, so I kind of like the protection of being behind this. I'm an engineer, not an architect person, so if this is okay with everyone. So I'm Burke O'Dell, co-owner of Full Spectrum Solar, and, uh, really happy to be here tonight and have this opportunity to talk to all of you. Um, my brother and I started Full Spectrum Solar in 2002. Uh, we're both UW Madison Mechanical Engineering alumni, and we had this vision to create an environmentally conscious contracting company that was installing the best possible solar energy systems available. Um, every single day, we have six trucks with 12 to 15 electricians and installers going out. Um, we're not, as I mentioned, a, a marketing-focused company, we're more interested in doing the best quality work, and so we have our own people, uh, doing installations, we're not getting a sale and then subcontracting the actual work. And we believe that helps us maintain, uh, you know, total quality from the design to the installation to the commission. Um, most of my installers and electricians have been with me for over 10 years, so we've got a really good rapport, really know the technology, and we're really passionate about what we do. Um, we have, uh, three degree mechanical engineers on staff, an electrical engineer, uh, we have, uh, two master electricians and three journeyman electricians, um, and we have a number of MASP certified installers. So we feel we're one of the most credentialed installation contractors, um, in Southern Wisconsin. Uh, to date, we've installed over 1,000 systems, and, um, these range from, uh, 3, 4 kilowatt residential up to 650 kilowatt, um, uh, for, uh, Forest Edge Elementary School, which is, uh, one completed about a year ago. Even though, um, as the person who was talking before said, there's a lot of like tweaking with HVAC systems and everything to get it all right, they still managed to be a, a zero energy, a net zero energy school, uh, for the year, and I think that's quite an accomplishment for the first year, because as they get better, they can, you know, optimize their systems, they may even be a, a net energy producer. You can learn more about Full Spectrum Solar at our website, it's listed there at the bottom. So, uh, this is a preliminary layout for a 416 kilowatt system, and, uh, this is the size that we believe will produce about 38% of the school's electric use, based on the estimates that we've provided. And, uh, we anticipate that there'll be about a 55 kilowatt donation, uh, from Solar for Good, which is a, it's a program administered by Renew Wisconsin. Um, we would install, uh, the remainder of the kilowatts with the same brand and size modules, so everything would match. Um, in the past, they were providing Philadelphia solar modules, um, I believe currently they're providing, uh, Zenshine modules. Uh, whatever the solar modules are, we would make sure they have a 25-year standard, uh, power output warranty and a 15-year workmanship warranty. Um, and, uh, the racking there to the right, that's a, a side view close-up of a, a recent ground mount installation we completed. And this is a Sinclair design and engineering racking, it uses C-beams that are driven into the earth, and, uh, it's a great quality, uh, product manufactured in Michigan, 20-year warranty. And I was going to make another slide, but with 10 minutes, I knew I could talk 10 minutes on each slide, so I'm going to skip it, but just real quick, uh, the inverters we'd be installing are SMA, and, uh, SMA is a large German manufacturing company, they've been producing inverters since the early 1980s. Um, I've been involved in installing their products since, uh, 1998, first up California and now in Wisconsin, so I know they're well capitalized, they stand behind warranty claims, I believe they're going to be here in the future. The inverter's a really critical piece of equipment, because it converts the direct current from photovoltaic modules into alternating current. So, um, a 416 kilowatt system, uh, would cost $798,000 before any incentives. Uh, we would anticipate a focus on energy reward of $71,800, and we would reserve that amount, so that you'd have a confirmation of the exact dollar amount, uh, before we started the installation. Um, the reward would be paid directly to the school after completion. Um, of the 1,000 systems we've installed in the state, the vast majority of those have received focus on energy rewards, um, and, uh, every one of those projects that we reserved a reward got the full reward amount at the end, because we successfully completed them. Um, I mentioned the Solar for Good program, um, uh, it's administered by Renew Wisconsin, it's a Cooler Solar Foundation, um, that contributed most of the funds, uh, for the program, it's available to nonprofits like the school. Uh, we anticipate about a 55 kilowatt module donation worth about $25,000, so the net cost would be $701,200. Um, with, uh, energy tool-based modeling, the system's expected to produce about 556,700 kilowatt hours of electricity per year. Usually, the, or at least historically, the modules that have been provided by Solar for Good are bifacial. Uh, what that means is that the backside of the module can pick up a little bit of a boost in power, uh, so I think it's possible that you'd get an additional 5 to 10% boost from the backside. I didn't include that in there, I just thought of it as a bonus, because I wanted to make sure you're conservative. There's still a lot of tests going on, figuring out, you know, exactly what the boost is based on the particular rack and the, and the tilt angle. Uh, some years it seems to be a lot better, like if we get an early snowfall and it just stays there, uh, because you have the, the white reflection. Um, so if we produce 556,700 kilowatt hours per year, that's $61,200 of savings, assuming a three, or sorry, um, the first year, and, uh, a 10-year return, assuming a 3% uh, per year electric cost increase, and a blended electric rate of 11 cents per kilowatt hour. Um, we could refine that electric rate, um, if we could, if we received a couple of years of past electric use, and then we could like bump that up to the estimated total use, and then model, you know, time of use rates, uh, demand charges, but we feel that's a reasonable, you know, first estimate of how that, how those, uh, different factors would play out in a blended kilowatt hour rate. Um, also just real quick, uh, we've, we have experienced partnering with Legacy Solar Co-op, um, to have a for-profit entity own an installation, um, that a nonprofit is hosting, and they own it for five or six years with an agreement to sell, sell the system at a discount to the nonprofit, which enables that for-profit entity to take advantage of the 26% tax credit and the five-year accelerated depreciation. And the idea is to come up with, uh, a contract that allows the, uh, nonprofit to reap some of the benefits that are available to them that are to a for-profit entity, so that's something we can look into also. Um, so, when you consider the modules have a 25-year warranty, the racking a 20-year warranty, inverters have a standard 10-year warranty, but an optional, uh, can be extended to 20 years for relatively nominal costs. Um, it's a really good investment over the lifespan, it's not a like quick return on investment, but it's a solid 10% return over a 25 or 30-year period. Uh, also, there's a, a enormous educational opportunity, um, the, every system we install has online monitoring that can be made, made available to people, you can download the data and process it. Um, we would also include in the last row of modules, the ability to tilt, change the tilt seasonally, and that, that could create some, you know, there could be like a test or some, uh, studies done to determine what angle, especially with the bifacial nature of the modules, optimized production. Um, as we're all experiencing right now, there's periods we have, uh, large amounts of inflation, and once you've made an investment on a solar energy system, if there's, uh, price volatility for fossil fuels, um, your costs are already locked in, you know what it's going to cost each month with payments. Um, and, uh, instead of sending your money out of state, you know, purchase, uh, electricity that's produced with coal, natural gas, et cetera, you're keeping that money local, you're, you're creating, um, you know, good construction jobs right in our community. Um, I think also too, like, I've, I've been in the solar energy industry since 1998, and it's still really great at a ribbon cutting or an open house to see how excited the community is, it really, you know, having a solar array puts a visible, visible component to your, uh, concern for the environment, I think it creates a lot of pride when, when you have a building where you can see, hey, look, this solar array recovering 38% of our power, and I think that, like, that's a big pride, is a, is a really, um, great kind of thing. Um, so I think I went in here over 10 minutes, sorry.
You are, that's amazing.
I tried.
You did great.
So, um, I, I'm guessing we don't have time for any questions, but, um, this is my, my email and, uh, my direct phone line, if, uh, anybody has any questions or wants to talk to me or needs more information, I'm happy to reply.
Thanks, Burke. So just to give an idea, um, we're going to kind of collaborate here a little bit, uh, online and through some messaging communication in advance of our next board meeting, and then, uh, we will be following up if there's like clarifying questions or things that we have, uh, for yourself or others, and with those in the next couple of days, and we're hoping to, uh, make a decision on this, I think, in the next couple of weeks potentially. So you can expect to, uh, you'll hear from us one way or another, even with questions or at the very least, uh, response in terms of what we're up.
Do you have one question?
So since we're planning on putting this kind of far away from our buildings, we're going to have available space, does it make you nervous at all to figure out how to get the energy all the way to our building, or opposed to it just being like right on our roof?
Um, it's, it's a little bit more expensive installation, uh, because, uh, because of the trenching and the electrical, but, but we can run the system at 1,000 to 2,000 volts DC, so that, you know, so we don't have a copper mine just, uh, operate it. Or, you know, we can also look and compare the economics of, um, uh, going AC right out at the site and then, uh, using a transformer to boost the voltage, but probably the most elegant solution would be to just, uh, design the system around a relatively high voltage, keep it direct current, and then, um, and then go to, as, as soon as it's going to be 480 volts, the building, or?
That I know.
So we go to 480 volts, uh, AC, um, because the inverters are more efficient at that size, and sometimes smaller schools or apartments, it's 208, we would just step that down with the transformer. But anyway, the, um, voltage drops are proportional to the current squared times resistance, so we can keep the voltage up high like that, you know, like that high voltage transmission line, we can, you know, make sure we're not, uh, you know, spending tens of thousands of dollars on copper, not to mention the environmental, you know, impact of doing that.
Thank you, appreciate it, Burke. Take care. Thank you, we all take care.
Yeah, that's actually the picture that we showed, that's what the fiber was, so it's like tilted, but then it's on like E1 stand, it's really nice, because then you can get under it and E2, and, um, the way that it's tilted to, then you can be able to snow off, because that's going to be, uh, as described, as needed, um, you need the bill or somebody, because they will have to go and see the poles, you know, whether it stops, staying over, or freezes.
Hello.
Hi.
Stepped into the con.
In the duct area, you're going to be by the pole, yeah.
Is it like a smile laser?
Yes.
You could have a button that opens the floor. Hope you don't get that. Uh, welcome, thanks for being here. Um, so obviously we corresponded a bit, the Board's excited to hear, uh, your proposal for Sunpeak, so you go by Mike or Michael?
Uh, usually Michael, you know, unless there's another Michael in the room, then we kind of have.
We have a mic, so we'll go with Michael.
Michael's good.
So welcome, Mike, we'll go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, so, uh, just a little bit about myself before we get started, I'm a project development manager at Sunpeak, located in Madison, Wisconsin. I grew up in the Watertown area, uh, went off to the military for a few years, came back and continued at Madison for a master's in electrical engineering, and then worked as a consultant for a few years, and then decided I wanted to get into renewable energy, and I joined the Sunpeak team last year. So, Sunpeak has been rapidly growing, and it's for a number of reasons, but these are three of the main reasons, our standard system architecture, the proven process, and long-term benefit to customers. Um, anytime you can streamline the process, you can find ways to save money, save energy, save time, and then pass those cost savings on to the customer, that allows you to be competitive and grow this company. So Sunpeak is primarily focused on commercial or industrial markets, along with the, uh, commercial market, like municipalities and other nonprofits. So, there's a number of solar companies out there, some of, some people are just developers, where they'll work with you on the project financing, they'll put together a heli scope design, show you the preliminary layout, and then they'll subcontract all of everything else. And then others are just contractors, installers, so you get up on the roof where you put up the panels, uh, get the electrical permits. Sunpeak is a full turnkey EPC contractor, so EPC is engineering, procurement, and construction, so we do everything from this conversation here today, to commissioning, interacting with the utility company, and then continuing and ongoing operations and maintenance monitoring contract, to make sure the system's performing rapidly. So here's our nine-step process, that's, again, just allows us to streamline everything, stay organized as a company, um, we go through the initial engagement and analysis, we look for any incentives with the project, um, talk to the project champions, uh, the CFOs, the CEOs, give the, provide signatures, do some preliminary engineering, and then we put together an EPC contract with a final system price. Uh, from there, it leads my desk, it goes to the project execution team, where we put together final engineering drawings, give the required permits, procure all the materials and equipment, have a pre-construction meeting, we do the installation, get a commission, and then we continue to support the project through ongoing operations and maintenance. Uh, so this apply, again, just kind of some steps of quality control at Sunpeak. Uh, you see there, John Schwartzner, he's our OLM, uh, leader and system integration group leader, he does all of the, the monitoring for all of our install, uh, installations across the country. And, by the way, if anyone ever wants to stop at our headquarters in Madison, you can go to three, uh, Chad's, and we're pretty happy to talk to you, I mean, because at any time. But, he looks at all the data and just makes sure that the inverters are operating properly, there's no faults. You know, when we propose a project to you, and we say that it's going to save you this much money, if part of the system goes down because of a fault or issue, then as time passes, you're kind of losing out on that return on investment. So you want to make sure that you're monitoring the system and it's operating as it should. Uh, so here's kind of just a dashboard snapshot, something that can be shown on a TV screen in the lobby, or to provide students or faculty with access to this, just going to the, going to the left, obviously, you can see day of production, month of production, uh, what the weather forecast looks like, but this is something that comes with every Sunpeak project. And then, of course, there's a warranty for, uh, the workmanship and the installation itself, and then all the manufacturers, they have their own, uh, product warranty, the solar panels have a typically a 25-year warranty, so if there was to be any issues due to, like, hail damage that they're tested against, or if any modules just aren't performing, we'll work with the manufacturer to get that module replaced, or if not replaced, we'll add on to the system to compensate for that loss of production, um, based on the manufacturer's warranty. So I'm going to put just a few records projects, some from the So I wanted to put just a few reference projects, some from the Cape Control Schools, colleges, and that's some groundhogs. This was for Tyson Foods, this was a large, almost six hundred kilowatt DC groundmount system. The next one is also a large groundmount, this is down in Illinois for Helensandie gravel, this one's almost two megawatts, so about eight, four times the size of the one that we're proposing here today. And then this one is for DePaul University, these monitors have black frames, so they kind of look slightly looking flush mounted on the preliminary. And then this was one of the first projects in Wisconsin for schools, I believe, the Lincoln High School in Monaco, two hundred eighty kilowatt system, and this is one of the Sunpeak kind of trademarks, is this dual-tolist west system, like, I know we're closing a groundmount here today, you can kind of see how there's no penetrations at all, you just have these ballast bricks that sit on top of the structural components, so prevents the system from being. So here's just a slide showing some of the companies that we've worked with in the past, QuickTrip, their bread factories, Tyson Foods, UW Madison, we've done a couple of projects for them, right now we're working with Kohler and the Sevier Shalit to do a couple of groundhogs, so those are important, and then we contracted with Ashley Furniture, Wisconsin Company, four twenty megawatts, so just all of their manufacturing facilities around Michigan. So now I'll answer the proposal for today. I think initially we went back and forth, a couple rooftop preliminary layouts, but we landed on this location, so we're invested over here, so I put together, and I was the one who developed this, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but I was able to comfortably fit four hundred seventy-five kilowatts up there, with the roles and orientation that you can kind of see on this screenshot, and then there would be seven inverters to go from DC to AC, and then we would need some kind of trench to go to the nearest connection point, I'm not sure if that would be in the existing buildings here, or if we back into the new proposed building, but that's one thing that we've, we've shared here today. So that would lead to about six hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred kilowatt dollars produced in year one, which would be roughly a forty-three percent offset, based on the understatement of the facility consumption. I just wanted to touch on the construction schedule as well, because I believe there was a target to get this completed by the twenty twenty to twenty-three school year. So really, I mean, if you guys say go tomorrow, some people have a little problem with that timeline, the largest, bottom line, I think there was just procurement, but as long as we keep this coming, we can, year one or year two, I can see us constructing during the summertime, if there's an issue with any commission or something. I just wanted to also touch on project finance, because I think we have an attractive solution on that front. So the charts to the right, they apply to both these solutions that I'm going to discuss, but I guess by default, here's what we're looking at, we're looking at a turnkey system for us, so a volume price of eight hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred, this is for that four hundred seventy kilowatt system that is shown, so oftentimes we create this down in terms of dollars per kilowatt DC. And then as a, as a school, you're able to secure a focus on energy grant under the special sector, in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred, which would reduce that upfront investment, and you'll receive that funding right after the system. So the man investment under a cash purchase price is eight hundred and three thousand dollars to one hundred and fifty, this previous system, and then the value that it produces for you is about fifty-six thousand dollars per year for an estimated two point four million, or the entire system. And one of the things the industry standard is to is some thirty-year system life, and it's not like when you reach thirty years and one day the system just blows up or something. We anticipate that it is maintained properly, it lasts much longer than that, but you have to pick a timeframe for the financial provisions, and that's thirty years in this case. So instead, what I think we would propose is something called an energy service agreement, and the flow chart is shown there on the right, so the Wisconsin High School District, as a nonprofit, did not benefit from the federal tax credits or anything type of depreciation of the PV system. So typically what happens is a for-profit business, their investment only looks a little bit different, they have the purchase price, then we get a twenty-six percent tax credit from the federal government, and then they can depreciate one hundred percent of the system right away in year one, and so that, that value depends on the total tax rate. And then they also can give the forward sum of a grant or say a little consent, and then they have that investment, but being a nonprofit, you can't say a grant like that. So what we have proposed is, we would work with a third-party financial partner who's interested in providing this type of service to nonprofits, and they would be able to monetize the tax credit, they would be able to monetize the depreciation, in exchange for a six-year energy services agreement. So what we would require for that is fifty-five percent energy prepayment in year zero, instead of the full system price, and then from there, we would have monthly energy payments, in this case, if you want, to four hundred seventy dollars. And then at the end of year six, you could say, okay, do I want to buy the system now, or do I want to go to year ten, and you could buy it at that point, after six years, for about a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. If you add up all those payments, you come up with seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars, seven hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, which is a discount on that EPC price that I showed on the previous slide, about nineteen percent. So by working with a third-party financial partner through Sunpeak, not only will we handle all of the OLM operations and maintenance and monitoring costs for those first six years, we're able to provide you with a discount of the purchase price. If you don't want to buy it on a year six, you don't have to, you could go up to year ten, or continue that energy services payment as long as you need to. The last thing I wanted to touch on was just student learning opportunities, one of our senior project developers is Dave Mullins, he works out of the OLM territory, and he's a former educator himself, he taught AP and art of science for many years, and we always talk about opportunities for schools, and one of the things he stresses is that everyone's busy, there's, there's always time, but there's never enough time, so how do you incorporate this solar EPC project into the current curriculum without taking away time from other things? So what he's willing to do is just come up for, for a day, and just have a couple meetings with current faculty, just talk about how you could incorporate aspects of the PV system into things like history, math, physics, chemistry, finance, economics, and you can talk about renewable energy versus how much energy is in a gallon of gas, and how many pumping miles you could drive in an electric car, and just things like that. So we could use them as a resource for the ministry, student learning opportunities. And then just coming back to that nine-step Sunpeak process that we talked about at the beginning, right now we're at the beginning stages, so we've developed the preliminary proposal, we may want to fine tune that based on more development, but the next steps would just be to do that fine tune process, get a proposal acceptance, we could get out here and make a full site assessment, trying to get their connection scheme worked out, where they want to tie into the new work system facilities, and then you get everything scheduled in the Sunpeak pipeline, and get the project done immediately. So bottom line, high-quality projects, safely on time.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
And you?
Thank you very much.
Any, any questions for Michael?
I don't think so.
So obviously we're kind of going fast and finish tonight, we've gathered some information, we're going to continue to do so, and then just kind of bounce some questions back and forth, through and forth over the next couple of days, we may have some follow-up questions for you, which I'll obviously direct, and we're hoping to make a decision in the next couple of weeks, so you'll hear from me one way or the other.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keep that.
Okay.
Just come here. Sorry.
What? Well, they don't really do solar.
They don't do solar.
We just need to find a company that will work.
I don't think we do, and they'll find a company. Well, they would find it.
Oh, yeah, they would.
They'll see us.
We don't have to, they'll work.
It's pretty good.
It's just being kind of busy.
It's real.
Okay.
Yeah. To me, the concern with that is, like, you just get another, there's another chef's kitchen.
Right.
Another layer, right?
Another layer.
And you just put it for a month.
Those would be the things that a lawyer would have to tell us, to everyone who presented that to me and said, like, if you just didn't want to buy this system yourself, here's an option to make it even more affordable. So that's a very normal part of this process, is working with a third-party, because they can participate in that.
Me either, I don't think it will, I almost said that, I was like.
That's why the company, they're kind of tricky out sometimes, so we just basically need to find a for-profit company that knows all that.
They do that.
They do that, yeah, that's what I like too, is that they already have partners that, you know, are willing to step up their platform to start here. Is there a next one?
Hey Katie.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good, welcome, welcome.
Bye.
Yep, so yeah, don't have to get confused, this is Katie.
Am I giving you the nod?
Yes.
I'm going to be nodding very quickly.
So welcome to Wisconsin Heights, obviously as we talked about, looking just to kind of high-level overview of what your company could provide for the district with regards to solar, so go ahead and take it away.
All right, this will be very rushed, so I apologize for that, but I'll do the best I can and answer any questions later, or via email or anything like that, so. Sunbest Solar, we've been Wisconsin's largest developer for six years and around now, we're in the Solar Power World magazine, that's in terms of total installed capacity, so year over years, we were established in two thousand nine, we keep growing the number of projects, but also the size of the projects. Wisconsin is our main focus, but we do have nationwide capabilities. We work with all the major utilities, MDD, Leenerdies, Alliance Energy, as well as some other notable companies such as Radio Flyer, we put about a hundred eighty kW on the Milwaukee Fox practice facility a few years ago, and some others of that stature. Our mission has always been to focus on cost-competitive solar solutions, while also providing job creation, environmental stewardship, and education along the way. Like I said, we have nationwide capabilities from Washington State to Maine and everywhere in the team, but our main focus has in more meaning to be in Wisconsin, since we are headquartered in Milwaukee, and I'm actually based in our Madison office. We have a number of different capabilities, we do low-tilt ballasted roof systems, we can do metal standing seam, we can do asphalt shingle, and then our biggest focus, especially over the last few years, has been groundmount arrays, because you can just fit more modules in a given space, so for capacity and economies of scale, this has been one of our biggest focuses over the last few years, both fixed tilt and single axis, once you get to a certain scale. So for this school, we're talking fixed tilt. As a Maryup Technical College, this was our largest array, this was the state's largest roof copper array, for about six months, it was one point eighty-five megawatts that we built at the end of twenty eighteen and early twenty nineteen. We then went to break our own record by building a cloud Davidson, that was two point two five megawatts just last year. We also have, we've done some more local, slightly smaller scale on schools, this is Merton School District in two thousand nineteen, about three hundred PW AC, so that's max, that metering for Leenerdies territory, that's why it was sized that way. You're seeing one school here, but there's another school just adjacent to it, and put solar on that roof as well at the same time. So we're here today to talk about your specific project, we, I have your utility mill, and so I actually sized it in a variety of different ways, looking at what's in that metering, twenty KW, that's peanuts, they're not, I think that's a satisfied whole lot for you, what would offset a hundred percent, you know, multiple megawatts, but there's somewhere in between, that's sort of the sweet spot, that's what we really wanted to focus on. Four hundred and twenty-nine PW, it's actually about four hundred and thirty now, I've red later on it, seems to be that sweet spot, so that, when using bifacial modules, gives you about five hundred and fifty-three thousand kilowatt hours production, that's in year one. Now, I specify bifacial modules because those do give you an added bump, so looking at this production, that's quite a bit higher than you'd expect to see from mono-visual modules, so if something were to change, we couldn't fit bifacial modules, and that production would change, but given what we know right now, and the availability of bifacial modules, we're very confident that those are models that we would procure. So at this system size, at this production, we are looking at a thirty-eight percent annual offset, we have modules and new options for modules, I'm assuming that we're able to get a solar for wood grant, the grant would actually come in the form of modules, not cash, so if we got that grant, we would use the fifty KW that they give us for free, and then Sunbest would actually procure the remaining modules from them, just so that they're all the same, so when we factor in the price, the whole project, we assume that we were bonding the remaining modules from that project. We have options for inverters, we can have to alter that later, it's a little more technical, but, you know, we would string it according to the model of the system size, and maximizing the output for your array. We would use groundmount wrapping system, likely an iron ridge type system, we've used on almost every one of our fixed groundmount arrays, and had very good success, we would get it specifically engineered to your project, so based on your site conditions, we would lay out the wrapping, the spacing, so it's right for your conditions. We've also considered, you know, structural engineering and civil engineering and environmental engineering, that's all factored into our price and our thought process when we're designing these things. We could put a permitting, landscaping, and a nice long trench, we would get power from the array to the building, if that cost wasn't included, that would have been a surprise, a meltdown or adder, so didn't want a surprise, you know. We did not include a fence, but we can, just because it is so far away, that's, you know, personal preference and safety is a consideration, getting that far away is not an issue, we'll leave it as is, if you'd like to add it, certainly do that. Another thing I should note that's not included, as part of our new building, we did reach out to Black Earth Utilities, just to see what their processes and their costs are, they referred us to Alliance Energy, so when there is export of some energy, Alliance Energy is going to buy that export, not Black Earth, so I had talked with them, they talked with their engineers, there will likely be some costs associated with this, in terms of their studies and potential system upgrades. You're smiling, you probably already know this.
We've tried to engage in that dialogue previously.
Yeah, I, I asked some pointed questions, and I was like, this doesn't make sense, me, I've never seen this in a Alliance territory, the project we decided before, and then I'm like, okay, that's what our engineer says, well, we can't give you specifics until we get to that part of the project, so just know that we would work with you, if the, you know, the cost gets to a limit, that it was sort of a fieldwork of the project, all that, that's understandable, but we would kind of work with you along the way to figure out what that is, what we need to do. So I keep talking about export, and this is really important, because you are not that metered, so any instantaneous overproduction is automatically going out the door, and you're getting the wholesale rate for that. So right now you're paying about eight point one five cents per kilowatt hour for the power that you, or the energy you purchase, when you produce energy, it's self-consuming, it's worth that rate, that eight point, whatever, eight point one five cents. When you export, assuming you're exporting during peak hours, which is about seven thirty AM to about eight PM, you only get three point two cents for that extra, so we have to figure out how much you're exporting, so we know how much to evaluate each and every kilowatt hour. So here you're looking at January, assume Monday is a peak on the left, Sunday, Saturday and Sunday are, there's a lack of a peak there, you'll have a tiny bit of export, you can see Saturday, like, a little bit sunnier than Sunday, tiny bit of export there, that delta between the green and the blue, that's where it's. where it's three cents. Everything under the blue curve is worth eight. This next one is an example in July. Um, the green, that delta is worth three, whereas the rest is worth eight. Uh, when we look at this, and we get data in increments, fifteen minute increments. When we look at it over the course of a year, we expect sixteen percent of all that energy produced, it out the door at three cents. So when we run our, our financial calculations, we're assuming that blended sixteen, eighty-four, eleven means all your energy's worth seven point three cents. I know it sounds a little bit in the weeds, but it's really important if you're trying to compare apples to apples. We're looking at seven point three cent energy, whereas someone might be looking at eight, nine, ten cent energy. When you look at it over the course of a year, let alone thirty years, that's going to add up. So we feel like this is realistic, if not a little bit conservative. This pays a little pre-governed picture. This is monthly offset. We have to see that export, the export again on an instantaneous basis. Uh, but this is what you'd expect to see in terms of monthly offset. System economics, so total system price, we're looking at about five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars all in. Um, if you've seen a previous proposal that we made in private, it would have been a little bit less. Um, supply chain shortages, labor shortages, COVID, you name it. Things are a little kind of crazy right now. So, um, this is priced, assuming today's prices. We do expect that to go down over the next few months. Um, so we hope that we could earn your trust and work with you and that, you know, give us an opportunity to ratchet that down. Um, but we do feel confident that we could build that for you right now at that price. Then looking at rebates, focus on energy, we feel that very often you would get that. That's not a competitive, that's a prescriptive rebate. As long as there's money in the pool, which is replenished every January, you, and we fill out the reservation application and the final application, you would get that money. Solar on schools is a little more competitive, although I think I've gotten ninety percent of the one that I'm likely for. So, um, you're pretty likely to get it, I would think. Uh, again, that is, uh, that twenty thousand dollars is actually the value of the model that you're receiving. Um, so that's twenty thousand dollars model we wouldn't have heard this, so you can just deduct that off the price. Those are the two main incentives we know about at the moment. I will say that being uh, Wisconsin's largest developer, we, uh, we buy and bulk. So not just for your project, but we're looking to buy sixty megawatts of modules, uh, in the next few months. So we get pretty good discounts on equipment when we buy that scale and we hope to be able to pass that on to you. Um, there are other incentives that periodically pop up. The Public Service Commission, Office of Energy and Innovation, they have one that greatly can be done in four days. But obviously, we wouldn't be able to do that after, but if this project were to stretch out into next year, we could apply to that. But Noros, E P R, I don't know if they're, I don't know if they might come up. But those are two we feel confident in.
So a couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
Full-scale operation, SunVest, so not only the design, the engineering, the installation, can you talk to, is it a turnkey operation? Do you work with others for the, the labor, the installation? What does that look like?
Right. So as a, a developer, we do outsource that labor component. Um, we have a number of trusted partners. They're obviously the ones that we've been working with since the very beginning. Um, and we do it that way because it gives us added flexibility. So we have the option to use union or non-union. We can competitively bid out of the labor so that we can get the best, uh, labor pool for you. Um, it's also based on availability. Some contractors are really busy all year round. Some of them have lulls, you know, in certain periods of time, so that we can, we'll find the best fit.
And then one other thing is that we've heard of all from a few others, and certainly found through some of our research as well, is the possibility with some of the developers that they might work with a third party to tap into some of the private sectors, tax benefits that they could reap from a system like this. Is that something that you guys typically do or not?
I don't believe that the law allows for that in the state of Wisconsin. And so, um, that would contribute to the third-party ownership territory.
Yep.
And there is pending legislation right now, but it hasn't been approved yet. So if any may get approved, we think it will in the next few years, that would allow private owners such as SunVest to own and operate the array and then sell the power. Uh, but right now, there's no legal mechanism to do that. Uh, and I will also point out, um, our in-house services. We do have an in-house service department. Uh, so we have a whole fleet of vehicles and tools and, um, people that go out and are trained who work on the equipment. Um, and we have operations and maintenance, which is similar service, but a little bit more on the preventative side.
Thank you.
And there's plenty more, like in your pocket. I did bring one pocket and maybe do with, um, one thing, if you see the value of solar, that's just expected bill savings. Um, above and beyond that, we really want to focus on, um, student engagement, student education. I personally have given presentations to the Merton fourth grade class. Um, we know a surprising amount about solar already. Um, so, um, that's something that I would just want to do is to present to students and help them understand solar, especially as a place in their school. We can talk about how to engage with the data from their monitoring system, you know, pulling that cell data, wrapping it, kind of extrapolating that out into the real world. We'd also help with marketing events for their cousins, community engagement, things like that.
Thanks, Katie. So we are going to just kind of bounce some questions back and forth with each other over the next couple of days, and then, um, probably will have some follow-up questions for you as well.
Okay.
Ultimately, the board is hoping to make a decision in the next couple of weeks. So you're going to hear from me, uh, soon, you regardless. So look forward to that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. They definitely have a lot to talk about. Does anyone have like, uh, questions kind of to talk about? If that's really like going, you want to kind of equalize your times or?
So I'll just, oh, that last question. She did talk about it, so I was curious.
Yeah.
Almost every other vendor that had proposed, not just the other two that were here tonight, but the other ones that had previously proposed, had talked about those energy service agreements. So the notion that it's not.
I think it's something in the terminology that she was thinking or...
So we can clarify it. I will clarify with her when she's not in the spot. But that is something that they've all talked about. I have a hard time believing they put it in their literature. They advertise it if it's illegal. Like, it'd be something you wouldn't talk about at a board meeting.
Right. Yeah.
So, but I will follow up on that.
I do like the first would be another like eight-fold turnkey.
Yes.
And they're both full turnkey companies. Um, I also like the fact that they're all like, you know, missing graduates too, which is kind of nice. Kind of keep it local. And, you know, the output on sun peak is, you know, a little bit more than what it is on full spectrum. But, I mean, both the first two, I find them very, you know, very competitive with each other, you know, and they were short-sweet and, you know, the rest of the information, I think, that we needed.
Well, the, so the difference between the, the first one and the second one is basically a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, yeah.
So I mean, I know you said the input's different, but if we threw a hundred thousand dollars at the first presentation, they probably could make it close.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just up to us how.
Well, yeah, just the forty-three percent offset versus the thirty-eight percent off- offset, you know. So it's kind of, you know, we're, when we're talking about the whole, you know, solar thing, it's like, we want to make sure we get as much bang for our resources.
You say five percent, a whole lot, but five percent over thirty years, I think that's pretty substantial, I guess.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, they're, they're so very close, you know, in terms of costs and, and, you know, offset and stuff like that. So... And the fact that they both did talk about the, you know, having, you know, partnering up with those third parties to, you know, kind of help with that too, which is good. And they talked about the grants and other possibilities that we would be able to take advantage of to...
So, sorry, I was just saying from my perspective, because I've been engaging with these companies and others for six months now, um, this notion of the third-party energy service agreement, initially I was very hesitant, and I still am. It'd be a good lawyer question, is to understand exactly how that works.
Yeah.
Because in our case, I mean, when companies typically are, excuse me, like, schools have typically done something like that, what I have been able to, to research or find is they're doing that because they do not have the capital in front to pay for the project. So they need somebody else to get involved to help cover the costs.
Yeah, make a partner.
Exactly. Where in our case, with refund forty-six dollars, we would have, from all of these system sizes, the ability to pay for this. However, I think the question becomes is yes, what do these legal strings look like? And how, how much labor, how much, um, how much pain and agony is it going to cause us over the next five or six years to have someone connected to this project? Because the notion of saving eighty-five thousand dollars, if, if a lawyer responds is, you know what, it's not really that big of a deal. You see a bill from, we pay a bill, and then six years, you sign a contract and it's over. Well, if that's what it looks like, it's worth, it's worth the eight thousand dollars. It's like, you know what, it becomes a headache, it's going to cost you time.
Yeah, it's going to cause like, you know, internal time having to deal with.
You might end up poor.
Well, that's why I was confused. I was like, if we could pick our company and we could pick something like Harvard Lots of Local, then that might be great for us. But if, if they're going to pick their own people, or they have their own people around, then that might not...
Well, it's probably a good thing that, you know, they do have those relationships because then, you know, maybe it is, just would be easier for, you know, us to, you know, have that agreement, you know, because they already have that agreement, you know, versus trying to bring in. But yeah, I mean, if it would be, if we could pick somebody local that could do it, that would be great. But, um, you know, I think it's probably still streamlined on their end that, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, assigning the agreement between the two parties and then kind of moving on.
I'm assuming it's large corporations who, yes, are just looking for corporate tax breaks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most definitely.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock that she's leaving.
Yeah.
How bad can your... Mike's going to come home and dollop your parking lot. Yeah.
I think relative to this piece, I mean, other clarifying questions, as you take a little deeper look at the presentations or the information, if you guys wanted to send questions to me over the next couple of days, I'd be happy to then follow up with each organization and then kind of put together a pros and cons list that we could share as a group as we think about this for the next couple of weeks.
I'd rather copy everybody on the questions, if you'd have ones that would be all the questions answered.
It'll be seven different questions of the same thing.
How about I start a document tomorrow?
Perfect, start a little.
And then you could just put your questions in that document.
Is it sound reasonable to ask them if they have a list of partners? Because, I mean, if it was like QuickTrip or American Family Insurance or something like that, that, I don't know, like, we, we have American Family Insurance.
Is it, yeah, I'm a little concerned of, is it just Joe Schmoll who lives in Timbuktu and they're going to support us and we have no idea who these are versus a QuickTrip or something like that? I think it makes a big difference. So, yeah.
Have you my opinion?
I'll, I'll get that started tomorrow. I'll share with everybody. And then once we kind of have a couple of days to add to that list, I'll send it to the groups and gather that feedback. And then in the meantime, do a little digging myself.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Thanks for starting that.
Yep.
All right. So, any last words on that? Otherwise, I, we can move forward. You're going to move on. So then, I point to looking at, um, as in theme and Katie, she's online.
I believe she is online, yep.
I need this to see, because it's in the numbers. Not being...
No. So, I mean, really, just with the Dane County stamp shot at the bottom, this is not a surprise to anybody. Case counts, yes, have increased in the county, um, for quite some time now. So I will, I'll spare you the details on that, because Katie has that much more. So go ahead. Katie, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
You sound lovely. Go ahead and take it away.
Hi, everybody. Um, so, yeah, case counts are a little crazy right now. Um, and the Wisconsin fourteen-day average right now is over seven thousand, close to eight thousand. We've had quite a few days that have been even over ten thousand, so that's probably going to keep going up. Um, as you can see, that's higher than our highest point even last November. So this is definitely the highest peak we have seen. Um, the positive in Wisconsin right now is twenty point four percent. Um, essentially not enough testing is happening. Uh, and if you've, uh, been trying to get tested anytime recently, then you've probably realized that it's really hard to get tested. So, and now with Dane County at ease, they just opened up the Alliance Energy Center again for testing. And Dane County's trying to make more testing available. But, uh, in general, the state of Wisconsin, there's just not quite enough testing happening. I did compare it to where we were a year ago, but, uh, I don't know if that's helpful right now. Uh, we were a little over, we went, our highest point a year ago was in November and we went down after that. So this is definitely our highest point so far, um, ever. And then, especially, um, this school year. Um, Dane County, we are seeing over a thousand cases, fourteen at a, fourteen day average is over a thousand cases a day. Um, we haven't seen anything near that in Dane County ever. Um, this is significantly higher than our highest point. Um, it's been really crazy to kind of watch that increase more and more. Um, percent positive in Dane County is also the highest that it has ever been. It's over twenty percent. We have honestly, seven or eight percent is pretty much the highest it had ever been before. Um, so Dane County, like I said, they opened up the Alliance Energy Center. They have increased hours at other places. They are trying to get more testing available in Dane County as well. I put this on here just because I think it's interesting. Um, they did change the colors for the state. Um, red, critically high before, but they had different shades of blue, um, in there. So they actually changed very high to orange now, which I think makes it easier to see what is happening. Um, Dane County, along with many other counties in Wisconsin, are critically high. Um, Dane County, however, is in that no significant change area. It's one of the few that is not growing. Um, I cannot call it. I'm hoping that maybe means that maybe Dane County is close to or at-ish its peak, but don't quote me on that because you never know what's going to happen. Um, so as of right now, we're seeing no significant change. But our no significant change is at extremely high levels, so that's not very reassuring either. Um, but maybe that'll lead to a decrease? I don't know. It's way too early to tell. But we're not in the growing category right now, so that's slightly good news. Go next one. Um, so those C D C numbers where anything over a hundred is considered high transmission. Um, Wisconsin is over a thousand, just over a thousand. Dane County is almost two thousand. Um, Wisconsin Heights right now, we're at four eighty-three. Um, we were under that previously, but, uh, I, I, I figured that was going to go up due to just the amount of cases I had hearing about and seeing at school. So, um, we have had thirty cases in the last week, um, in the Wisconsin State School District area, not just the school. Um, but, uh, there is probably more. I, I hear a lot of people that are doing at-home tests, so then they're not always getting reported if people don't follow up with P C Rs or self-report those at-home tests. So, uh, there's probably, there is a lot more than just that in our area as well. Um, I did poke around on the sites that gives us the school district information, and I found it really interesting that pretty much all the school districts bordering us, um, to the west. So outside Dane County, right? Did that right? Yeah. Uh, outside Dane County are all over a thousand, pretty much as well. So the areas around us are definitely seeing high levels of cases right now. Um, the other school districts bordering us. Um, the ones in Dane County are pretty similar to us, maybe slightly higher. The seven-day, um, average cases are a hundred thousand. It's a hundred and fifty-six in Wisconsin, um, two hundred and thirty-seven in Dane County, and then, um, sixty-nine point six with the Wisconsin Heights School District area right now. and then sixty-nine point six with the Wisconsin Heights School District area right now. So vaccinations, I, I didn't quite get all my data in today. I'm sorry. I did my best. It was a little crazy. But I at least tried to get the percentages in there, because I feel like those are really what people are probably looking at, besides just the numbers themselves. So in Wisconsin, you have sixty-two, five percent of the population has one dose, and fifty-eight percent that's completed. The series, Dane County, we have eighty-one point two percent that is at least one dose. And then fifty, seventy-seven, sorry, eight point eight percent that have completed the series. I was just going to go look, because they have it on their website. And I think it's fifty-eight percent of the who are eligible for boosters have gotten boosters. I'll wait for the site to open, and I'll let you know what that one was in a minute. For our middle school and high school students, we have two-hundred-and-fifty-seven that have started the series and two-hundred-and-forty-four that have completed. My data for our students' vaccinations is from about a week ago, so if anybody's gotten anything in the last week, they don't have that in there. I just haven't had the time to go look at immunizations again. But that's about sixty-nine percent of our students in the middle school, high school that have one dose and sixty-five percent that have completed it. And yes, it is fifty-eight percent of the people in Dane County that were eligible for boosters have gotten them. The elementary school, we have had a hundred and ninety students start the vaccine series, and a hundred and sixty-nine of them have completed. And that fifty-six point five percent with one dose and fifty percent that have completed it. I'll just add, when we did our third vaccine clinic, we had a hundred more doses given at the third vaccine clinic. So we've had about four-hundred doses given between the three vaccine clinics that we've done. And we have one more scheduled at the end of the month. So hopefully, we'll get some more boosters and stuff done in that one, because now they're available for twelve and older. And the Wisconsin Heights Community is up to seventy-four point three percent with at least one dose, and seventy-one point three percent of the population has completed the series. Those have been in the sixty percent before, so it's really nice to see those up in the seventies. I didn't have time, my, like, usual check, have cases, quarantines and stuff, that hasn't been updated. I own a tech of everything, so I just wanted to give you a recap of where we were at the end of last week. And I can tell you a little bit about today, but as of last week, by Friday, we've had eighty cases of COVID this year, this school year. Twenty-four of those cases happened at some point since Christmas or our break started. So, and eleven of those cases came to school, oh, twenty-four of those cases, sorry, happened at some, were here at some point last week. They were out at some point last week, sorry. Twenty-four cases were out at some point last week after break. Eleven of them came to school while infectious. We had thirty-nine students who were put on quarantines last week, whether that be because of a close contact at school. Many of them were close contacts outside of school, but there were some from close contacts in school. And then twenty-eight students were out last week due to illness. And we did ninety-three tests at school in our testing site last week. As of today, I, I can't tell you how many more quarantines I have. There are more, but I, I don't know the number, but we added eight more cases today, most of which had been in school while infectious at some point.
That's what I did.
Matt, do you want to just talk big picture on this topic for right now, or I could certainly fill in, fill in some blanks as well?
So the isolation and quarantine guidance has changed by recommendations from the CDC. And what is confusing to a lot of people is they actually shortened things to five days. And it seems that, that the opposite direction to way, to which the numbers are indicating and the opposite direction to which we are feeling. So that, that has created some, that's created some confusion among people. You know, the ten-day, seven-day quarantine that we have been operating by clearly hasn't slowed the trend, so going, going the other way. Well, it does keep kids in school, so a big, a big part of, a big part of that. And I think the rationale by the CDC is also, it gets, it gets people back to work sooner as well. So, you know, in our case, teachers and staff members that, you know, we are having out, we could get them back sooner with the CDC guidelines. But the question is, at, at what cost? I mean, you get, you get people back sooner, and then are they actually infecting people? I mean, it's, it's possible, but it's a lower, it's a lower risk. The other thing about the CDC guidelines is it's, it implies strict masking. So strict masking and the difficulty is with, with a lot of kids is, yeah, you're coming back after five days, but strict masking, you know, students do this all the time, and they converse with their peers, and then sometimes this stays down for until a teacher tells them to put it back up. So, and with, yeah, especially with middle school, high school students, they will, they'll get away with this as long as they can, because that's more comfortable. Matt, I want to tangent a little bit.
No, no, it's okay. Feel your passion.
We do.
So I, just relative to that point, though, because, you know, even some of us have talked about this just through other conversations. And the notion isn't that we're, like, inherently, despite some of the irony of just where we're at right now, we're not inherently opposed to adopting these new guidelines. But the biggest issue that we have found is in the midst of having a nursing staff, administrative staff, and the student services staff that, quite frankly, is scrambling just to keep their head over water right now without further guidance, which is what we're awaiting, and supposedly is coming from PHMBC and DHS as early as tomorrow, because there's just a lot of questions about what exactly does this look like? Matt talked about the notion of strict masking. There's been other conversations or things put out there about something as simple as lunch. So people that are between that five and ten-day period, do they need to be sent to a separate location for lunch? They're not around other individuals, because obviously during that time, they cannot mask, because they're. Now, that might seem like, that's not a big deal. It's not until you're the one that's trying to implement it and without some guidance. Because what inevitably happens is, when there's questions, which they understandably are, if you don't have a good understanding of what exactly it is you're trying to implement, you feel like you're just kind of chasing your tail. So we are looking to make adjustments, and, you know, next week is the start of the second semester. So what we are hoping is that this guidance does come out from PHMBC and from DHS. And then that guidance is something that we can take to update and utilize to guide our practices. If that happens in that fashion, then despite some of the reservations, we do want to try to safely do this. There are some schools that have already adopted the five-day quarantine. What I heard from some of them last Friday is that most of the kids aren't coming back after five days, because they still have symptoms. So I think that's the key piece in the communication, is that it's not just, well, you hit your five days, you still feel ill, just come back, because the five days is up. You need to be five days, and the symptoms have abs, and now you're feeling better. So, big picture, I do believe we will be making adjustments as early as next week. We just did not want to rush to make those adjustments without further guidance. And quite frankly, did not have the capacity to sit down internally and sketch out what all of this is going to look like as Matt and others are either, in the case of our principal, Subby, or in the case of Matt, Katie, trying to do contact tracing and test. So just putting it out there with where things are at and what, what's coming, but for where we're at right now, explaining the situation. Matt, is that fair to say?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, we want to have a clear date when we would start this. You know, that, because starting tomorrow, for instance, we would have to recalculate quarantine on, you know, what upwards of forty-some kids, which would be time-consuming. And if we, if we start at a clear date, maybe something like second semester, if that, if the guidance comes out, then, then we can, again, try to keep kids in school, particularly kids who are not symptomatic. You know, kids who are not symptomatic, we want to, we want to keep them in school. So, and, and the vast, the vast majority of, of parents and families are keeping kids home when they are symptomatic. And Cindy, you started the meeting out with a thank you. Yeah, there, there are so many families that are making the right choices and helping, and so appreciative. And that is, that is great to, great to hear and see.
Yeah, so I think, you think it's supposed to come out tomorrow for public health?
Katie pays as close of attention to this as any human you can have ever met.
Yeah.
Deanna just said theirs was supposed to come up somewhere else. At least the DPI State Nurse Consultant said that. Public Health Madison Dane County said today, and I haven't seen it, so I, I don't know. So hopefully soon.
Is it something that, you know, if Public Health Dane County, they come out with the recommendations, is it something then that we do start for second semester? Is that something that you guys are comfortable saying, yes, go ahead and do? You know, is, you know, it's already Monday, you know, we get the information tomorrow, Tuesday. Is that enough time to then change all of those quarantines come before Monday, the next Monday?
I don't quite change all the quarantines that are already there, but anything going forward could, as long as they're symptom-free, if that's what DHS comes out with. I mean, that's why we went up, what Public Health, you know, we preached that, we got a lot of what their guidelines are, so why wouldn't we know? I mean, we would have, we would have suggested this if we didn't think it was in the realm of possibility. Understanding that this, like, many of the decisions that have been made for two years are, you're weighing what sometimes feels like the lesser of two evils. But, yeah, I, I agree with what Mike said. I mean, we, we tried to kind of hang our hat on this. And I think we've done it quite well and consistently, and that's part of the reason why we have been as successful as one can be educating in the middle of a pandemic. So I guess we're hopeful that, yeah, that information comes out and provides a level of clarity. I mean, we've seen, we've heard bits and pieces of what it could or should look like. So I don't think it's going to be like a whole new language. It's just going to be a matter of taking that information and then, all right, what does this look like in practice and knowing that, starting next week, we'll be at the second semester? That is what basically our operating procedures are going to be with regards to this. And as Katie said, I mean, hoping that we've, we've kind of hit that, that tipping point. I mean, that's, I can't, I can't promise that. No one knows that, but at the same time, we've got to be getting there soon.
Well, I think that Friday could be that opportunity to share that message, sending an email that goes out.
Correct. Yeah, no, I agree. And I think, I mean, between that and other communication, we have tried to communicate with people when there's relevant information. We said we were going to share data regarding the case counts, and we've been consistent on that five weeks. So, I mean, yes, we will. I think, yeah, whether it's that or even the standalone message later this week that just tries to make something that is, quite frankly, confusing relatively clear, we will try to do that. We have general consensus that that's the direction.
I think that's what I'm seeing.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Go ahead. You could just move through these. They're the same. So just here at this slide, we had a district leadership team meeting today, which has staff members from every building represented, administrative, where most of us are able to make it to that meeting as well. I, I just started that meeting with DLT by kind of acknowledging the fact that where this situation is at, this isn't exclusive to Wisconsin Heights, by any means, but with where this situation is at right now, is not, not where any of us want to be, myself included, you guys included, and to the extent of our staff, to, to thank them sincerely for trying to deal with a tough situation as well. Just like we, as parents and grandparents and whatever, are sick of this. It's been awfully hard on our teaching staff, and, I mean, I mentioned our principal, Subby. Not that they're incapable of doing that. I think sometimes they might even like it a little bit. But when you do it, like, once a month, it's fun. When you do it every day for days upon days, it's exhausting of them too. So I'm not trying to be heavy downer, because that's certainly not who I am. But at the same time, yeah, to be real, and we need to be real with each other, that we are at a clearing now that none of us wanted to be in. And we are, we are staying open to the best of our ability, and we are operating on a very slim margin right now. There is, there is not room for irresponsible, irrational decisions on the part of anybody, because we just don't have the staff to continue to welcome everybody here, which is what we want to do. We talked about that last week in our operational planning meeting. The notion of having to make an announcement saying we're going virtual for a week or two or whatever, like, that gives me a gut ache to think about, and I hope it doesn't come to that. But I just, I want you guys, I want to be completely honest, that we are doing, I feel like, whatever we can to keep the ship moving and in person. And there's not being decisions made here to go, send them out here, because we're taking that likelihood. We're just trying to keep the ship rolling. And there's a lot of people that are really exhausted, and I know parents are too. I have not made use of that. So I just want to be real.
Do you have an understanding of at what teacher level, at what staffing level, you can continue steering that ship? I mean, I think it feels that it seems that it's getting fairly close. Is that, I mean, that.
Well, I think it is rather.
Yeah. Absolutely. But I'm just wondering for us, I mean, are you, do you have a plan? And, I mean, is that everything is all in place and to know if it happens?
So, I, to that end, and we talked about this, it's one of those, to me, and you guys can tell me I'm crazy. To me, it's, it's not a hard set number, because so many things are circumstantial. And like, well, this class, we can find a way to cover by doing this. This class, we can do this. So to say that there's like some magic number when you do, the straw that breaks the camel's back. But as we talked about, there's some of these things where you just look at the situation, and you know what's going on and what's being done to keep it going. And you say, well, I didn't need anyone to show me the number. I just know that right now we can't do this for another day, because it's just not working. And I know that's not what some people want to hear, because they want to hear, well, if there's ten teachers out, then we close, and we're shut down for five days. And it's, to me, it's so much more nuanced than that, that there's not like a magic number. It's just, we'll know when we know, and if we get to that point, we'll communicate that. But I guess the other thing is too, is, this doesn't just have to escalate immediately to like, oh, we're shutting down the district, or we're shutting down. or we're shutting down Mezzo Elementary or we're shutting down Blacker School. Like, we could find ourselves in a position where this section of third grade is closed for a few days until we get some people back, or maybe the entire third grade is online for a few days. So I think that's the other piece that we're aware of, is we hope it doesn't come to that. But this doesn't have to be an all or nothing decision, it once again can be circumstantial. And like, all right, at this level, it's not working. We gotta take a little break here because we don't have enough staff. And in some cases, I mean, yeah, there's, there's very large groups of students that are gone as well, where we're making that work, or their families are trying to make it work, and they're giving some Zoom lessons from home. Uh, but yeah, that's, I guess, that same kind of, this isn't art, not a science.
What I appreciated is, is like the forethought that we adjusted the teacher pay when they have to cover their classes and, and we raised the, um, substitute teacher pay. And Jordan, in his preview for this meeting, he was talking about, if you have an aide that has a teaching license, perhaps we can address some things on that end to create some more flexibility. So, I think that we're on the right track, we're trying to stay as far on ahead of it as we can. And so I appreciate Jordan and the admin's team leadership and coming up with those types of ideas. And I, I have heard good positive feedback from teachers about that.
Yeah, I just wanna reply to that whole thing.
No, all right.
That number, 'cause I know we're asking it, so, um, but I agree, and I think that it is an art, you know, be very creative. And I think you guys are doing a great job of being creative. Get all those scissors and, and glue and certain, and get creative.
Yeah, once again, I, this, this is one of those times where collectively trying to stick together the best we can to make the best decision we possibly can. We're not, I'm not trying to sugarcoat where this is at right now. It's, uh, it's a challenge, there's a lot of people that are, that are tired of moving, yes, staff, parents, kids. This, this is not that easy on anyone. But I do applaud the efforts of our people for what they're trying to do as well. And we will continue to try to be positive and friendly and, and understanding as, as professionals as well. Any other questions for April? Obviously, you have something near, you know, when we get that guidance and that communication looks like, the board will be included in all of that, so you're aware, just like the families and the staff, of what direction that's going? But I think with some clarity for Public Health and DHS, that'll help.
I agree. All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we will hold on to some district business then. Six point one is open enrollment, do you have a, a motion to accept open enrollment in for students twenty-one through twenty-two? Who's, who are here?
Hello.
Thank you both. Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Andy, you go, Barb?
Yes, Mary Beth, yes, James.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve an addendum to the employee handbook for the pay of the substitute support staff?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you both, yep, James and you.
Okay.
Um, as you just mentioned, James, here it is, um, do you have a question?
Yeah, so I noticed under the, um, previous agreement that the administrative assistant was seventy-five, between a regular and long-term, seventy-five cents an hour, but we went from just like twenty-five cents on that one? Fifteen to fifteen, twenty-five? I don't know why there was that difference, but there was that difference. And also the twenty-five cents is the, is not really proportional to what there was, it was always twenty-five cents. It doesn't seem like a lot of difference between, you know, just the regular self and then the long-term self. I don't know if that's, will it be the special or not?
Well, I mean, I guess to that end, the notion of needing a sub, whether it's for one day or for more than ten days, we're, we're in a position right now where we just need the sub period. And the difference between the long-term substitute pay and our full-time staff pay, that margin is relatively slight at this point. So to increase that any further would actually put those positions at or above where our contracted staff are, which we've done some, some research on that, and, and they are compensated actually competitively.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes, I mean, there, there definitely was some thought as we put this together to recognize people for this subbing and to raise their rates to something that's competitive with just about any entry-level job that you could find in society right now. But at the same time, we certainly do not wanna put our subs in a position where they were then pushing at or above where we're hiring full-time people, so that's the explanation for those differences.
Do you need any else?
We would take this into effect immediately.
And then we will reevaluate for next week.
Yeah.
See where we go.
Yeah.
Who knows? All right, not hearing anything else, Mike?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. All right, if, okay, I will combine eight-one and eight-three.
Oh.
And that was eight-one through.
Through eight-three.
Just wanted to clarify, still good, perfect, okay. All right, um, thank you to Mason, we look forward to Christopher, um, coming in.
Does he go by Christopher or Chris?
Chris, sorry.
Yep, I'll go by Chris.
Chris, yeah.
That was the first question, I think that Liz and I asked him, we met him a week ago at CISA two. Just curious, 'cause some people are. He, he did apply for the position.
Okay.
Mr. Dostal sent me an instant messenger last Monday and said, we have a candidate. I said, did you call him or her? And she said, look, I said, call, tell him we'll meet him anywhere to interview him. So we drove to Whitewater last Monday to interview him in Whitewater.
Thank you guys for doing that, yeah. Um, and then just thank you to Tracy for, for your team.
Well, and also I'd like to add that one of our open enrollments is, is, is a hundred percent.
Yeah.
He feels so compelled that the school didn't offer any kids, and that's like good stuff in the recognition.
Absolutely.
He's very eager, um, to join our district. He has been working in our scene for four years. And very challenging situation, and no disrespect, but just a very challenging situation with the middle school and our scene. Uh, we met with him for an hour and just kinda talked about Wisconsin Heights and the community, uh, students and the staff and the board. I don't know how many times he told this, Dostal, I, I'm so excited. So excited. And he mentioned his family and how he wants a, a strong community and a strong, safe school for his child as well.
Good facilities.
Good facilities.
Yeah, I mean, just renovated, it's gonna be beautiful, yeah.
Very excited, I mean, that, that honestly was one that would have been about a flip of a coin whether we would fill that position or not, which would have been very painful for us not to fill that position for the students involved in that program. So we're, we're very happy with the situation, we're good for us.
Great, uh, Mike?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. I would like to take the donation separately, just to make sure we fully thank everyone. Do you have a motion to approve a donation from, um, oakwood flooring valued at six hundred and fifty dollars from CTW Flooring to the tech department?
I'll sign it.
Okay.
Ready to.
All right, so yeah, just a huge thank you for any type of donation, um, great going to the tech department. This is gonna have some great things to work with. Anything else you wanna want to share? All right, uh, Mike?
I'll stay.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. And then I would also like to take a motion for, um, the donation of wood flooring for five hundred and fifty dollars from Mike Wagner to the tech department. We don't have to go very far for a thank you, sorry.
So.
Matt, you, yeah.
He's there.
So, thank you, Mike, very much. Again, I think it's, just speaks to our community of, that we have these individuals that are willing to donate to our school. So that's just a great, great thing. Okay, all right, I'm a computer girl, so it's a good thing we're leaving. Um, Mike?
I'll stay.
Barb?
Thanks, Mike, yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes, thank you.
I will say absolutely yes. Uh, future meeting dates, um, our next date is for January twenty-fourth. Um, any other meeting dates needed, otherwise I will take a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Thank you guys. Mike?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yep.
James?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Barb, thanks for joining.
Thanks, Barb, take care.